Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, June 19th, 2024. Meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Wukowski?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
We're all present.
Thank you. Let me stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wukowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Community comment. I don't see anybody signed up for community comment. Does anybody care to comment? I don't see a lot of people that could. Consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar. There's a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, July 10th, 2024, at the ECC at 6:00. Annual meeting of electors, Wednesday, August 14th, 2024, at the ECC at 6:00, followed by the regular Board of Education meeting on that same day at 7:00 or as soon thereafter as the, or after the annual meeting of the electors ends. District administrator update. Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to June and the school year being wrapped up and summer learning has just started this week. So over 700 students were serving across the road at Forest Park Middle School, in addition to our students that are at the high school for our 9 through 12 grade program. A big shout out to Janine Bombian and Haley Keskey, who are our administrators through the program this summer. Also to the, any other administrators in district and in the ECC this week that have walked over and helped make sure all our learners are getting on the right bus, getting to the right classes and just having a great experience. It's been lots of smiles and I think quite literally three students with tears through the process that we got through pretty quickly. So it's been a great effort. It's fun to have the students back in the building. Last week, while the building was quiet for a minute, we did host the Chamber Networking Breakfast. This was an opportunity for 80 members from the South Suburban Chamber to come together. They do this monthly just to network, but it was a great opportunity for Franklin Public Schools to get an additional 15 minutes to kind of showcase our coherence plan and then also specifically the work we do in our college career and life-ready indicators and reach out to those businesses to try to increase our partnerships for youth apprenticeships, internships, and other workplace experiences. Andy Thompson was a great help in that, also in promoting and putting out ability for them to reach out to him to build those partnerships. Tonight, we have a great amount of agenda items that project Franklin Public Schools into our future in planning across all avenues, learning, engagement, facilities, and additional opportunities. While we will speak individually to each of these throughout the night, I think it's important for us to review how they all intertwine and the impact they have on our staff, our learners, our family, and our greater community. So tonight, we're going to learn about learning, engagement, well-being, and fiscal responsibility as outlined through our new coherence plan that Dr. Mo will talk us through. It has a lot of resemblance, as you've seen in earlier iterations, to the current coherence plan that we are tying up tonight also and wrapping up. But in addition, it looks at specific data and metrics around our service groups. So that's identified with DPI as our EL learners, English language, our students with special needs, and also our free and reduced population. It also pulls in a board-approved annual report and projected work for technology in our Buildings and Grounds crew. So a couple of the new indicators, the rest pretty much being what's been there. I think it's always a good reminder and I like that it falls on the same night as some other big pieces for us as a community and board as it really is the driver to who we are and what we do in Franklin Public Schools. Following approval in July at the board meeting, our plan will continue to be to roll out the coherence plan at our August Leadership Summit on August 6th and 7th with all of our school improvement teams. So that's about 125 staff members. From there, we'll have a larger rollout with all staff at our August 28th in-service when we welcome staff back at the Saber Center. And then we'll be introducing throughout the year and especially in our kickoff district newsletter to all of our families and our community. We also will be doing a variety of Franklin Focals, so our all-district mailer. We hope to increase the quantity of those this year. And the first one will really be looking at the new coherence plan also and what we stand for in Franklin. Another important piece tonight, we get to come back around the Community Education and Recreation Department space that we've been looking at. We've put that out to bid. Andy and Brad are going to present tonight on that process and who we're looking to offer that bid to. I think what's great about this space is it offers a community room, which is something we don't currently have that's in need to the Community Education and Recreation Department, includes some courts for pickleball that can be repurposed, but also some studios to add activities. So I think it's really nice to ground back in that this conversation started with Dr. Miller and Mr. Millsner before many of us were a part of the district and that were able to carry that forward and meet some of that demand that that program is seeing. And then I think the other exciting piece tonight is following the retreat the board had last week to bring forward as asked a resolution for Franklin Forward and having that as a focal point tonight. But more so, I want to spend the opportunity to quickly thank our community for completing the survey that we went through with School Perceptions last meeting. We had a 27% rate of response, which is very high, as Bill Foster shared with us at that point. But to again, thank our community for giving us that feedback to adjust our plans and to take forward what the board decides with this evening to continue to grow our systems and fulfill needs that we have. So looking forward to a great night and just re-grounding in all of the things that intertwine this evening. It's kind of nice that they come together the same night. So thank you.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other board business. 2425 SWSA agreement. Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right. So in the files within our agenda, we have just the agreement moving into the next year. We annually approve this work, so bringing it forward tonight to prove to continue in this consortium.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the SWSA 2425 agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Any discussion?
Is this an increase in this same membership going forward?
I believe it's the same price and, I'm sorry, what's your second question?
Same number of member.
I think there's one or two districts that are no longer in it, but they didn't increase the charge, the used funds that they had to cover for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have questions? Discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Coherence plan, end of year report. Dr. Mo, please.
Thank you. So this is the last time. We're kind of doing both. We'll update you on the old coherence plan and moving to the new coherence plan. We had a similar meeting with administrators and coaches earlier this week where it was a say goodbye to, say hello to. Some things were the same, some things were different. So if you remember, this is an update based on those metrics with all the different colored boxes. So if you go to the linked metrics document, anything with the gold highlight along the left is something that's new. I did try to add in the notes some bigger picture, a little bit higher level goals of year to year, right now that we have that year view. Two specific things that I just wanted to highlight. One is that we did work throughout this year to develop a new employee engagement survey with some questions. I know that's been some feedback from the board all along that maybe the questions weren't getting at what we thought they needed to get at or making it actionable for us. So I included those questions in there. And then for the family engagement survey, in the good news category, I remember last year sitting here talking about our low response rate for that family survey. We doubled those responses this year and managed to close the gaps. There's a chart there. When we say gaps, if 10% of your population is an English language learner, you would expect 10% of responses to be from those families. So you can see that we closed the gaps, making us feel like moving forward for a baseline measure into the new coherence plan that we have a more representative voice and sample of people across the district. So I included notes there and then I also included the end-of-year updates for the school improvement plans, which some of you may be familiar for, for your liaison sites, but may have not seen others in the district. So that was the detail provided there and I'm happy to take questions.
Questions on the metrics or this year's, the end-of-year report? Any discussion? Or should we jump into, should we jump into the new coherence plan?
Just a quick question. So the year-end for the schools, what's the latest data that that includes?
For which category? Do you have a specific piece of data you're wondering about?
Just in general.
So for instance, we don't have forward exam scores in. So we weren't able to update anything with closing gaps. We're told by the state, normally they're here like end of, end of June, early July. We've been told by the state they may be delayed well into August or September. So I'm, right now, my plan is that I could for sure share that with the board, with the December assessment update. If you wanted me to come back once they come in, I could certainly do that. But so for instance, that's a piece of data missing. There's no update. Our closing goals metrics had to do with forward exam and we have no scores there. Anything that can be updated has.
Is there current MAP data in there?
Current MAP data is in there for achievement. So if you look under that growth in that very first bullet point under student achievement and growth, if you're looking at the situation report, last year at this time, we had a growth rate of 48.6%. This year at, this year at this time, at this time, we have 48.5. So not much change on our reading growth. For math, we increased from a rate 49.3 to 53.3. So that's looking at, if you think about 50% growth means a year's growth in a year's time. You're always wanting to make sure we're above 50. The goal would be to be well above 50%, especially for groups who might be lagging. So that data is this year's, the last time you'll see this year. That was from the spring, May.
And that data rolls forward?
That data rolls forward. You got it. Yep. We'll set goals for that next year. So that stays with the kid, their scores stay with them all throughout school.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What else? All right. Please.
Let me just move on to, so new coherence plan. At your spot, there should be a copy of just the first two pages, front and back. You've all seen this before. You've given feedback before, which has been very helpful. So it should not look hugely different from what you've seen. There's nothing snuck in there that's different, especially those first two pages have stayed the same since you've seen them. So if you're trying to search for what the changes are, there have not been any big changes since we last met and talked about it. The one thing that I did want to point out is if you look at the full link and the pages that come after, you'll see that those metrics will stay the same, but things like core strategy areas and celebrations will update throughout time. So those things will change, that verbiage in there. We filled it in with some pieces that we knew so you could kind of get the gist, but you should expect that the next time you see it to be different. So front two pages kind of stay the same and get updated. The first top half of those detailed pages stay roughly the same, right? The goals aren't changing, but the core strategies and the celebrations will change. Go ahead.
Do you anticipate archiving those core strategies and celebrations in any way? Or alerting us as to like when they change? Do you know what I'm saying?
My plan was, and tell me if this makes sense to you, because we could flex it, is still do the three times-a-year board updates and archive them at that time. Here's your update at this point in time. Here's your, we've moved our surveys to be a pretty clear fall/winter/spring testing, with the exception of forward exam and ACT, so local testing, not state testing, is kind of a fall/winter/spring. So we could try to time the scheduling of the updates. So I could bring to you pretty much every update, but state testing, if that makes more sense.
It would just be nice to know when that was modified, if it's going to be modified, modified more quickly, even just saying like putting a date comment.
Yeah. Idea would be their kind of annual. So like what you see would be the annual scorecard, I think. What's indifferent is that it's still a three-year plan and basically in three years, we're saying we'll come back and adjust if any of the strategic priority areas, learning, engagement, well-being, or fiscal need to change, or the indicators within.
Yeah.
But basically, the three-year commitment is this front piece is staying the same.
Got it.
Those subsequent pages on each indicator, the piece you're asking about, will change annually. That's what we'll work through, through like the summit and things with the teams to identify. Okay, here's the core strategy area, like EMLSS has been an example. That may hang out for a couple of years because it takes a while to fully implement, but that core strategic area would be looked at annually.
I'm sure you'll, you will keep archives of what they were from year to year and it would be maybe just a little hot link in there in case the data divers amongst us were curious about where it was before.
Yeah. That's easy enough. Sure.
That's a good question. That is sometimes hard to look at historical data and it.
Especially if it's narrative.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So then, these are, the scorecard is still like a rating, right? A 5, 4, 3, 2, or 1, which combines data.
Combines with the percentages you see on the front page for what's worth what, if that makes sense. So there's smaller indicators you can see underneath that, that learning. But the, so the overall score on the front page is how each of those percentage subheadings or sub-metrics scored. If you flip to the back page, you can see the detail of how that will be scored and that's based on the, the pages, the detail pages. So those scores carry forward from those pages that you see. Does that make sense?
It just makes it a very high-level picture right here.
Yes. First two pages, yes.
But we'll be, we'll be looking at the, this level. The data you bring to us three times a year will be at the, this lower level.
I would say flip the page, both of those levels. The, the three times a year, the front page is not going to change three times a year.
But the back page, like we'll have ACT composite, we'll have reading growth, we'll have.
That will happen once a year. So something like, we only give the ACT once a year. So there's nothing to update three times a year, if that makes sense. We'll have a new ACT composite annually.
But reading growth and math growth will be three times a year.
We would have that data three times a year. Likely, the forward-facing will only update annually. I can share that data with the board, but we won't be changing the big picture pieces three times a year. But in the assessment report, you would see, like we've done updates here three times a year, that for the board, yes.
The assessment report, different than this report. Right.
The coherence plan updates, that would be me updating you on any data that we have to share. So MAP growth, yes, could be one of those data points that we share.
Okay. And we don't have the definition of under self-funded insurance, right? There was no document or anything I could pull up that tells us what that measure is at this point. Come here.
Other than what's in the page that's already in there? Is that what you're asking, something additional that people could go to?
Right. Where is that definition?
Everything that we have about that metric is on that page. There's nothing additional besides what I shared with you in the link right now.
If you go in the link, it's the 21 page. So each of the indicators on this front page has a page about it. So self-funded insurance is probably around page 19.
The last four. Yeah.
On page 19.
19? Okay. I guess I did raise this before with the board and with administration, but I, I think that we could do better with that measure. Let me just find what page it is. It's 19. It, the measure currently is fund balance, I believe, if I pull it up. And I would propose that a better measure might be a cost of the plan relative to a range from low cost to high cost. I believe we are in a high-cost range at this point and the indicator would say bring it back to the middle and making progress toward that. I think that has more value to our employees. They don't know what fund balance is and it, I mean, that's what we have a health insurance for, is cost and their benefits. And fund balance doesn't drive any of those considerations. It just, it's about purely the money and not the services and the cost of those services.
So if you go to page 18, there's a separate indicator on self-funded insurance, which looks different than the fund balance on page 19.
But I believe the definition is it's fund balance reserved for health insurance. Essentially, it's fund balance.
For financial health, right? In our health insurance plan.
And I'm suggesting that rather than focus on fund balance, we focus on the cost of the plan and try to bring that down. As a, as a more definitive focus as opposed to fund balance, which has no meaning to employees, has no meaning, doesn't drive anything.
The cost of the plan, the cost of the plan to who?
I'm sorry, what?
The cost of the plan to who?
The district.
We don't know the cost of the plan to district. We're self-funded.
We do pay the, we budget and there is a cost or it's a premium charge to employees. There is a cost of the plan. Is that correct, Mr. Cromie?
Mm-hmm.
We do have that information.
Yeah. My concern is what are we judging it against?
The prior year and an average. I mean, we had consultants here tell us that, I mean, they know what the cost of the plan is and where we fall within the market. And we are on the high end and we need to bring that closer to the middle. And that would be our goal over three years.
So my, I don't have a concern about us judging against our own costs, but if we're comparing against any other health plan's costs, there are so many variables in the health plan that make the cost. So whether deductible is part of that, co-insurance is part of that, prescription rates are a part, like you have all these metrics that make up a health plan. So just looking at a cost of a health plan is not comparative without comparing all of those other metrics to the health plan you're trying to compare it to.
We can compare it to ourselves, just as long as we bring that cost down each year. I'm okay with that.
So I, I think we ran through that this year and we found out how hard that's really going to be. So for us to truly have that as a metric.
Because it's hard, we're not going to do it.
Our goal is always going to be to not raise it. But I think the reality is, and I think you had said it in that meeting too, Linda, was like health insurance costs rise and we're going to constantly look at ways to keep it as cost beneficial as we can. This metric is allowing us to look at being only on when our third year is self-funded, like ensuring we have a balance there to help us in years that could be very catastrophic if we have a lot of health issues. So that's what this is measuring. But we'll obviously be looking at our insurance every year annually, as we did this year, to look at how do we try to maintain that with what we have for our, for our staff.
I just think there's more value in looking at the cost head-on, what that plan cost is, and bring it down. And to your point, yes, we, maybe it can't go down, but we know it's very high-end within the marketplace. We know that. And that needs to move. And I think that would be a goal that would benefit us fiscally. And it kind of, we'll, and we'll also have to of course bring our employees on board with this. They have to know that their, their plan is high-cost and need to know where it fits within the, with the marketplace and how they can be brought on board with that, knowing what our goal is. Otherwise, you know, this is just a fund balance thing. This is a once-a-year look at it. There's nothing, I don't know how you would even, what kind of tax would you use for this? Other than keep the premium high? So do you have a good chance of having something left over? I don't know. How, how would you approach this?
I think in fairness, we would always look at it to not be making a premium high to make this number look good. Like I think in the transparency and honesty of how we do it, we talked about this through Better Place to Work, that that committee will continue next year and that Andy and Laura will share out the work that's being looked at with insurance to try to keep that cost down. Will the reality always allow us to do that? We don't know. Will we always try? Absolutely. So like no decisions they are going to be made to try to keep this number down. Like that conversation is also taking place and going through the Better Place to Work to keep them, staff, aware of what's being looked at with insurance and where those costs are looking to be. But if it's, the reality is it's not going to fall back to a staff vote every year on what we want insurance to look like. Because the reality is that cost will change. We will do our best to keep it the same or down, but that's difficult with health insurance, as we all know. So we're going to do our best to do that and bring the best plans forward, working with all of our consultants.
I think one interesting thing about this coherence plan is that, you know, it's difficult to boil down the entire work of, of a district into a one-to-two-page document that gives a snapshot of what we're doing. And each of us might have a particular issue on here that we're passionate about and we can always seek more information on it. But this is a good reminder that, A, that particular area is being tracked and there is some high-level data we can look at. And if we have more questions, we can always ask them. So I am pleased with the coherence plan as it's presented.
I also think it's, I applaud it. You know, it gets, each iteration keeps getting better. And this, this seems to be, the data is coming more quickly and it's more, it's easier to track on this document through the year as you go into these separate things. You know, not that, not that insurance isn't something that we need to look at over the year, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think this is something we need to change in this. But maybe it's something, maybe it's something that, that changes by, by 27 to, by the 27 to 30 model. But, but I'm confident that we're tracking, that we're tracking the fiscal stewardship with this, with where it stands now. Anybody, anybody else have comments? Questions?
I think this still could be improved and maybe we can ask for that data. Maybe it's not officially part of this plan. No one's ready to do that, but could we have that information next year? Where the cost of the plan is relative to the market as a, another peek at this? Another view of this?
Yep. Absolutely.
But it's also important to keep in mind that the report that you're mentioning was an offhanded comment by a consultant who, off, it was just an offhanded comment. Like they felt like their gut feeling is that we had a more expensive plan. They by no extent gave us data. So we could ask for it, but I'm not sure that what you're thinking will happen, will happen.
Well, and as Andy already said, it's very difficult to compare health plans because what Franklin offers is going to be different than what Greendale or Oak Creek.
Their patient population is different.
I mean, but the plans themselves are not apples-to-apples comparisons, so.
They don't have to be apples-to-apples comparison. That's why they're different. That's why the cost is different, because they're not apples-to-apples. Well, it's a good thing we always have insurance as a, as an agenda item, so we can discuss it then.
Well, and I think what you said was that some of these, you know, deeper into the document, these might change, you know, through the years, whereas the front two pages are going to stay the same. Some of these indicators might change. So as we go through this and we start working with this coherence plan and, you know, move into this first year of the new coherence plan, maybe things will change. A good example is our ELA curriculum K8 is new, right? So that's going to be a main focus of how we look at reading achievement this first year. Some of it will just be implementing the new resource. That will likely look different, even in year one to year three, about what we're focusing on. I know the board asked several times about how will we know if the new curriculum? Yeah. That's a fair question. We're going to have to put a lot of focus on, are we doing that? That might look even a little bit different by year three in terms of the details I bring back to.
Well, I will say this, this version of the coherence plan does have a stronger fiscal stewardship measurements than we've had before. I'm happy with that, but I'm not, still think we have a ways to go yet on what the focus is. And I'm, we can close this discussion and move on.
So this will come back. This was just information only. I know that Mrs. Yank sent me an email, so thank you for that. Found as many times as I've read it, a little, something that we're going to fix. So you can feel free to reach out if you think of something or have a question about something. The vote is not till next, till July. So can I just, just telling them that super quick? So it, we, it's 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, 10% or 30% of Fund 10 expenses are higher. Where, where does that, where do we find out where Fund 10 expenses are? So we know what our grade is on that one?
So that'll come out when we report on where we are.
Okay.
So that's not, like we don't have a ticker out front telling us where we are. So that'd be at year-end reporting.
Okay. So the generated over 750,000, we don't know whether that's a 5, a 4, a 3, a 2, or a 1 at this point?
Which one are you looking at specifically?
Just under.
Patient?
The fund balance, key performance indicator, our celebration.
The overall fund balance, the?
The fiscal stewardship.
So the health one or the regular one?
Just the regular one.
Page eighteen and nineteen.
Well, I can tell you our health one's probably gonna be close to zero percent after this current year we're in. For our fund ten, unrestricted fund balance will be at thirty percent. We're, the, the goal is really to not add the fund balance until we absolutely have to. So trying to maximize where we are at some point, our fund balance, because expenses go up every year. So maintaining the exact same fund balance in terms of dollars will not be functional. At some point, that's gonna have to go up, but right now, we're currently sitting pretty well, so. Getting it to a, a more reasonable level in general, trying to maximize what we're using right now.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions about the coherence plan? Comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to a staff handbook, first read. Ms. Lankor, please.
Yeah, so this is the first read of the changes for the employee handbook for the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Not as many legal updates as we've historically had. We just don't have anything significant in that area. And most of the updates the board would have seen previously, because they're very closely related to Better Place to Work. So it's just putting those things into our handbook so that staff have access to it. So I'm happy to take any questions.
So when did we no longer have department chairs and curriculum coordinators? When was that changed, maybe?
So for the most part, I wouldn't say that they're necessarily a stable position. We kind of look at those on a need-by-need basis. I wanted to take that particular piece out of the handbook, because it's not a consistent thing that occurs. It's a, when it's needed, we implement it. And they have an agreement that they sign as a part of that and what the role entails.
Okay. And then I, I had asked about the new compensation schedule, or what are we calling it? Schedule or a?
Compensation model.
Model. So it's not part of the handbook? Why is it not part of the handbook? I know it's some other place, but why is it not in the handbook?
It's not that it can't be in the handbook. We could put it as an addendum, like an appendix piece of the handbook. It's only related to one specific, or a couple employee groups. So it's not related to everyone within the handbook, but we can put it as an appendix.
Do most districts include their salary schedule?
It varies. Some people keep it separate and out of their employee handbook, mainly because you can also update it a little bit more independently if needed, because obviously employee handbook comes before the board.
I guess I'd like to see it in the handbook. It's something that we've, as a board, have reviewed and talked about, and this is the only document that we obviously have some approval over.
So I had mentioned in the email response that it's in the employee hub, which is what we talked about at the May Better Place to Work Committee. Like Laura said, it can get added. Employee hub is a place that the employees log in to get all documents like this and other things that are related specifically to their employment and being an employee of the district. I think Laura stated, well, it doesn't hit all employee groups, which our employee handbook does. But it's also, if it's wanted by the board, it's not a big deal to add. Just let us know.
So, so the hub speaks to that person's status and salary and everything, rather than the district as a whole?
So the employee hub is not specific to each individual employee, but it is where all of our resources are for employees. So it has a page, for example, for payroll, for benefits, for human resources, for work comp. So that's kind of where we house all of our forms for employees to access.
Angie, please.
We did have some conversation when we were presented with the compensation model about the fact that those numbers would adjust as we received more data. So I guess my question would be, how often would you foresee adjusting those numbers? And if it's more often than when this comes before the board for approval, that would be a reason not to put it in the handbook.
So ideally, we're gonna get those beginning of November, mid-November. We'll know if there's more districts or not, but we will pull ours around mid-October, send it in, someone puts it all together right, and then, and we get access to it. So like, hopefully, I'm adjusting that by the middle of November to end of November, so I can start planning for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. When I do the very, very first preliminary budget. So I'd be running with numbers at that time.
So it's once a year?
Right.
Yep.
Like salaries are figured out once a year, so we'd adjust it before that's the way to have it for the.
So it's not like it's changing every, or randomly. It's a process.
Correct.
And where are other employee groups, their salary schedules? Where, where do they sit?
So that's something that we're working on with Better Place to Work as a continuation into the next school year. We'll be focusing on our support staff areas as well as all of our others. So that's just work that's continuing into the next year.
So those schedules are also real schedules and they're?
So they will look pretty much significantly different in terms of, if you were to just look at it side-by-side, because for almost every other employee group, years of service is not something that is reported. So for our hourly employees, EAs, custodians, food service workers, they're not reporting years of service. So that idea of kind of having the zero-to-five, five-to-ten, ten-to-fifteen banned, we're not gonna be able to get that data. So it'll probably look more like, here's a single number, and these are additional hourly wages for every five years you work, or every, at five years, it's a quarter, you know, ten years, it's fifty, so I don't know what they are, but it'll probably look more like that. So here's a starting rate. You're falling under CPI, and then these are the bumps you get at certain particular years to help keep up with really kind of what our median is. And then we can pull the median data every year, just like we can with that. But there's just not years of service provided, so it'll just look more like a single line by position.
Perhaps a solution would be we could include the addendum to address Linda's concern, and then just make a note on it to say, this may, you know, for the most current version, go to, go to the employee hub.
Because it might be only once a year, as you said, Linda, that it's gonna change. But if employees are signing their handbook down in August, when they come back, and then the numbers are gonna change in November, it doesn't seem to make sense to publish that, like, what they're agreeing to in August is then gonna change. And that, I'm not sure how I should recognize or reconcile that. Unless, as you say, you have it in the handbook with a note that says this will be changing.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think anybody else really shares a significant concern about this, so would that address your concern?
Yes, I like it in the handbook.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will bring that around for the July meeting. I'll have, make it as an addition.
All right, any other questions? All right, CERC building bids. Mr. Cromie, Ms. Bennen, Mr. Anderson. Yep, so in March of twenty twenty-three, we came to the board with a CERC building, essentially floor plan, or broad-scale floor plan and site plan. It's almost identical to the one that's in the board report from a site plan. There was a rendering prevent, provided as well, so if you click the link on the rendering below, and a materials list. Those three items were developed by PRA. Per the board's direction in the March of twenty twenty-three meeting, we, sorry, let me back up. For March of twenty twenty-three, we used those to pre-vet some general contractors who had taken those three items and given us about what they think they could potentially build that for. Those, I, those numbers provided to us were ranges. They were certainly not bids. General contractor's not gonna bid that without having hard, physical documents that describe the entire building, top to bottom. Board's direction on March of twenty-three, uh, twenty-three was to go out, get the full set of drawings, bid the project out. So over the course of that particular time, we have gone through that process. So the vast majority of our plans were developed by June of twenty twenty-three. We met with neighbors in June, took some feedback from our neighbors, did some adjustments to those particular areas of concern as best we possibly could. Some things were reasonable, some were unreasonable, and some were not allowed by code, and some we could make the adjustment pretty easy, no big deal. Ultimately, that went back to those neighbors in October for review. And we made some minor tweaks based on that. Again, that was mostly around vegetation, trees, things like that. In the interim of that, we had also asked a company to bid out this project, who was not allowed to be part of the five groups that are bidding us. So we paid them about fifteen thousand dollars to say, bid it out entirely. We need to know if we're gonna be in the ballpark. Those bids came back. We decided, yep, we, we think we're relatively in the ballpark of where we're gonna be. Prior to sending out to bid, we took it to the city, so they have to do some wetland delineation and review. So they, that took a little bit of time. We ended up going back to the planning commission three times. They would consistently ask for more public input, and the same people showed up to speak at the planning commission each time, same feedback. In April, that was finally approved. On May first, we released the bids. On May tenth, we had what's called a pre-bid meeting, which is, it sounds weird, because the bid is already out there, but pre-bid before they're physically required to turn them in. We had, I probably fifty people in this room, so all five vendors and many, many subcontractors were here to ask questions, get some insight into the project. Ultimately, those bids were received at the end of May. Mike Hacker and I reviewed the bids, so you will see in the middle of this, like a big spreadsheet or a big grid that has all of the bids. So there's what's called a base bid, which is the bid for the community education and recreation building. There's an alternate O one, that's the health clinic add-on, and you'll see a series of alternates S one through S five. And those are some things that we asked the company to provide some deductions for if we decided to do those things on our own. So the initial look at this, put share construction and VJS construction services as the two that we wanted to consider, given they were about four or five hundred thousand dollars less than the others, so we started with that. Andy Daniels did the work on a all-inclusive playground. And in working with the bid for the all-inclusive playground, the bidders made it very clear that they prefer to do the work for the rubber base, simply because if it's not laid exactly right, they're gonna ask you to tear it out and do it again till it meets their specifications. So even though it's slightly more, roughly eighteen thousand more to have them do that, we felt safer saying, go ahead, take care of the entire playground, top to bottom. We'll prep it, so curb it and get the base in there as part of the construction service. Another piece we asked them to bid out were some recreation, kind of exercise pieces for the pads that are located. There's three pads located around the walking path. So you'll see that bid in there. It was roughly twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then really the key bid, and we hadn't necessarily planned to ask this, but Selsor Orns provided a deduct of a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars if they could start the project in March of twenty twenty-five. So it made sense for, through talking with Mike, that we should go back to VJS Insurance and see, what would you deduct if you were to do it in March of twenty twenty-five? And ultimately, when all of that gets put together, VJS comes ahead by roughly twelve thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things for a total project to our recreation department of seven point three million dollars. And then for the district health clinic of seven hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. The math on that, then, the seven point three million dollars, last year we levied one point eight two five million dollars. Of that, we spent roughly four hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. So again, at the time of March twenty twenty-three, we had stated it's gonna be about five hundred thousand dollars to do all the designing and get that all figured out if we can do the project, so we're right in that wheelhouse. So we have about one point three five million dollars left from that tax levy this particular year, twenty-three, twenty-four. We're gonna add the one point one five million dollars that was moved in probably seven or eight years ago into fund twenty-one. We'll add a million dollars from our recreation fund balance and need a levy of three million seven hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars to cover the remaining costs to meet that seven point three million dollars. The health clinic, the seven hundred sixty-eight thousand, that'll be funded out of fund forty-six. That's a general education cost that is not associated with recreation whatsoever, so we'll have to use either operational dollars or fund forty-six from our long-term capital improvement plan to fund that particular piece.
What is your guiding principle in terms of determining your fund balance for recreation department? Asterisk, why can't we spend a little bit more of it?
I'm trying to keep them at roughly thirty to forty percent of what they spend, knowing that we could, if we hit COVID again, and we have to cover that, we're gonna be levying for it again. Not that I think we're gonna hit it, probably not. But at this point now, that's a real concern to be out there. So trying to keep them, they spend about one point six to one point eight million dollars every year, so roughly around six hundred plus thousand dollars. The alternative, or the, the piece running through my mind is if we do better in any particular year, we can just lower the levy for that particular year. So right now, we're doing six hundred eighty-four thousand of operational. If we make this all work and we don't need as many dollars, so still continue to try to do the million, we can lower the levy in twenty-five, twenty-six by some portion of those dollars to wash it out in the end, to make sure that we're levying what we need and using the fund balance that we stated we would use.
And then, can I ask one more question and I'll be done? The only thing that looked different to me on the, or that was newer to my eyes was the playground. I don't remember seeing that on the initial sketches. Can you tell me more about that? And I did not understand what you were saying when you said they prefer to lay the ground. Who's they?
Great question. So it was an add-on. We talked about it in March about adding it in. So it wasn't in the initial site drawing, but we talked about it at that time, adding an all-inclusive playground, so. Think KLS Playground, although not quite as big, but the ability for a child of any physical need to be able to use it. They being Lee Recreation, who would be providing all of the equipment. They, they prefer to do the rubber surfacing. Based, Andy did all the legwork on that. Based on the explanation provided by them, it is a tight tolerance type of product. It's poured in place. It's a tight tolerance type of product. If the general contractor messes that up, Lee's gonna come and go, nope, we're not putting it in. You gotta take that out, redo it till it meets the specification, where if we have Lee Recreation do it, they're gonna pour it, and if it doesn't meet the specification, that's on Lee. That's not on us. It's on you to fix that, and we expect this to be done by X, Y, and Z date and kind of process. Otherwise, we're at their beck and call. I think Linda had her hand up first here. Linda, please.
So the last time the board saw this project, it was about six million dollars on the high end. And you explained the process that you went through to get that number. They were real contractors giving you that information. Six million dollars. It's now seven point three million. It's over budget. So we shouldn't be doing this. This is not the same decision that we made back when it was six million. It's a different decision.
So the decision that was made in March of twenty twenty-three was, here are some preliminary estimates of what they think it might cost, should we go out and bid out the project. There was no budget that was set. It was determining whether we have the green light to go bid it, or we should set it off to the side and leave it. So I would equate what, what a construction company did to, here's a list of players and how tall they are, and you're trying to determine how good your basketball team is gonna be versus actually going to watch that, the kids play, and see if you can make a basketball team out of that. So they had the list of players, which is a site plan. It's an idea of what the rendering looks like, and it's a list of materials we'd like you to use, but you haven't actually seen the play. That's all the plans generated, top to bottom, so they're looking at heights and all of that jazz.
But when, when you come to the board for a decision on the project, it should have, it should be the whole project. We're not talking about a basketball team here. We're talking about a thing that we're building.
I agree, but I think if I came with a five hundred thousand dollar bill for something we weren't gonna bid, people would be looking at me like, why did you do that? Regardless of, regardless of where we were then, this is where we are now.
And where we are now is more than we should be spending, from my perspective. I understand that. You probably don't agree, but I think it's too much money. And then furthermore, we had a funding plan attached to that six billion dollar estimate, based on, you know, real people, which was two point three million available from the rec department. Right now, you're only applying one point three. What happened to the other million?
So.
And we had, the plan was.
So the two point three, one point one five was in fund twenty-one, so that's included in here, and we're using about a million dollars of fund balance. It, it's possible we can use more. Happy to do that after the year shakes out if we would like to. What we're approving today is the project.
We also are approving the funding. How can we approve a project without funding?
Because we don't officially approve a tax levy until October. So if rec has a banner year.
If we approve, if we don't approve the tax levy, how are we gonna pay for it?
We're gonna have to approve a tax levy of some sort. What I'm saying is we can take a look at the fund balance of recreation, and if they've done better in twenty-three, twenty-four, we can add more dollars to that and pull less away from the tax levy.
Okay, I don't understand. First of all, there should be two point three million dollars of fund balance. That's what you had back then. You didn't use it. Should be there. Second of all, the one point eight, let's just round it up, the two million of levy that we, that we increased the levy last year, that base is still there this year. So you have one point eight plus one point eight.
We've spent four hundred seventy-four thousand of that already, of that one point eight two five.
Is that four hundred thousand part of your seven point three, or is it on top of that?
Part of that's seven point three.
So then that number should be less. You're way over, you're way overfunding.
The all-in project of the, the all-in dollar amount for the project is seven point three million dollars. That includes the four hundred seventy-four thousand we've spent to get this, to get this prepared.
Is that seven point three in this future budget? Is it, what is the budget for in twenty-four, twenty-five for this project?
So I have about eight or nine million dollars in the budget that we're gonna ask you to approve tonight, because that's what we were estimating based off of the project costs that were provided from our original estimate back in, in October. Bids came in better. Bids came in significantly better.
Can I ask you a question?
Anne, please.
Looking at all of these alternates that you could omit, which, I mean, that would reduce our cost, right? Is there any chance that the city would want to partner with us on any of those playground, walking path, fitness stations, given that this would be, you know, accessible by anybody in the, you know, you don't have to have a student ID card to use the playground or anything like that?
Zero percent chance.
You've asked.
Yes.
Why is it zero percent?
Because they have no interest in adding us to their long-term, what is, what is the plan, Brad? Their long-term comprehensive plan, because they don't wanna go through redoing the long-term comprehensive plan, and because it's not in there now, in order to get that in, they have to go. in order to get that in, they have to go through that entire process.
I think it was in the plan, we saw that plan one year ago. There was a, there was a gymnasium in that plan.
Well, we're not building a gymnasium.
I think you went back to old plans that you found in the library somewhere. They did not develop a new comprehensive master plan last year. It's at least ten years old.
Well, then they should be developing a new plan and including this stuff.
We're not here to debate that.
Out of our control.
That's, there's nothing we can do.
Just reasons to spend money, reasons to spend money.
Well, we have a community asking us for more space and more services, so that's the reason to spend some money.
I will not support this levy increase, and this, this project is over budget, so I'm not supporting this.
There's no budget, there has been no budget. So it's fair to say you don't support the community ed and rec plan. It's fair to say that, but to say it's because it came in over a budget is not true. So you can say, I don't support the community ed-rec program, that is fair. But you can't say it's because they are not abiding by a budget, which we have not yet approved. No, they gave us an estimate, we allowed them to go to bid, that is what happened.
I've been a budget manager, essentially, they are more than what they told us.
All right, we
They are more than what they originally told us, so we made our decision to go ahead. It is more than at that point in time.
But everything costs more now. When was, when was your six million dollar figure? What was the date?
Over a year and a half ago.
When you come to us with a decision, you should have that in mind.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Everything costs more, and you don't know, I don't know now what things are going to cost a year from now.
You make a decision, you want to know what you're baking the decision on.
What are we making the decision on today?
Well, we're not approving anything today, we're asking you to consider approving the release of the bid with VJS. That bid amount would be two different pieces. One is a cost of five million nine hundred forty-two thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars for the CIRC building, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-seven for the alternate, which is the Health Clinic.
Is there any chance the city wants to, will join with us in the Health Clinic?
It's possible they would do that, but I've been involved in that process two different times. And in both times, melding a health plan became incredibly hard. And what I would propose, if we're interested in doing that, is getting the clinic up and running for our employees and our families, and then asking people to join and providing the model.
Essentially leasing space for that, to them, or?
Not leasing space, but figuring out how they could schedule appointments and how we're going to be reimbursed for allowing that to happen.
Maxu, please.
Is there any possibility that we can propose the county, Milwaukee County, for any assistance? And are there any of the national organizations which can help pay for some of the playground or any of the extra stuff, if you're thinking about like, walking path and all this stuff, which helps kind of cardio and all, any, any, any any possibility where we can request some extra grants or funding?
It might be worth looking at some of, going to the, our friends in the Ed Foundation and just seeing of some of the grants that they routinely apply for. I can see this playground maybe being attractive. I don't think it would be enough to pay for a lot of it, but if, even if we could get like twenty-five thousand dollars from something, that might, that might be worth looking at.
Well, I'll address the county one first. So, three months ago, we sent a proposal to the county to take over the small restroom storage facility at St. Martin's Park. When I inquired last week, that's still sitting on a pile and hasn't made it to even the very first conversation of, should we allow the school district to do some work in here to get it up to code? So I don't know if we want to spend the time waiting to go to the county to ask them if they'd like to participate in anything. It's, it's pretty much, anything I've asked the county about, we just fall into the pile of paper. We could certainly ask the Education Foundation, I don't know if we'd have an answer for seven, ten in terms of this, but ultimately approving this, we're not even going to be paying a construction company until March of two thousand twenty-five anyways, because they wouldn't start work until then. So we have enough time between now, if we were to ask them to determine if a grant's even feasible and if it fits the timeline, because we'll still approve a tax levy in October of two thousand twenty-four. So we would have to have that answer then. But if it were, if it were to come in after that, we could take a look at the twenty-five, twenty-six levy and say, we received twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll pull twenty-five thousand dollars off of six hundred eighty-four to blend it all together and really consider over two years versus the one.
With regard to the Health Clinic, we've, we talked a bit, we've talked a lot about insurance recently, and we talked a bit about it tonight. How do you how do you see the Health Clinic helping with regard to our, with regard to our health insurance?
Yep, so having been a part of two of them, one from start to finish and one was in the middle of the process, in both instances, our Health Clinic really became the primary care physician for a fair number of people. And ultimately, when you start, or when you work with a clinic vendor, you're paying a flat dollar amount for all their processing, to have their clinician and medical assistant, and then pretty much everything else is pass-through. So all the supplies that they use, medications that they dispense, that all becomes a pass-through cost. So really, I look at pass-through costs as totally fine from my standpoint, because if we have a pass-through cost, it means people are using it. So I don't, I don't worry about that too much. And we're also paying less for those costs than they would be if they go to the doctor or if they go to Walgreens or CVS down the street for a medication. So that, to me, is totally fine. It's really driving enough people to the clinic to make it worthwhile. So typically, what most, most vendors will do is provide a guarantee upfront and say, in the first year, we're going to save X, Y, and Z off of your health plan. So you typically wash out in year one, and utilize, it's like any new business, utilization isn't as high in year one. It's really Laura and I's job to sell that to, to get people to go. So, like, I don't see it as being a problem, having done two and selling them, people will go. It's incentivizing it by making it free. What we would propose, or what we will propose if the board approves this when we do approve a vendor, is not only allowing people on our health plan, but all employees to also go. So if they do not take the health insurance, or we don't even offer health insurance to that group, allowing them to go. So that does put a dent in how much you can save on your health plan, right? Because the person who's not offered health or doesn't take health, you're not saving us any money by going here. But ultimately, we're already paying for all the hours of usage. So really, it's a pass-through cost for people that aren't on the health plan. So again, for people that aren't even offered health, it's an option that we can say, not only here are the wages, but we also offer a clinic, so if you don't have health insurance, you can feel free to make an appointment here, and at the very least, you'll have some sort of coverage for yourself in terms of some medical needs.
What do you mean by health, pass-through cost?
So a pass-through cost is it costs them five dollars for that medication, we get charged five dollars for that medication.
So we're still paying for it?
Well, we're paying for it either way, whether it's on the health plan and it charges us seven dollars, or we pay five dollars in the actual cost of that medication.
Although it's free, the person's done.
To the employee.
If they're not on the health plan, it's additional cost to us.
So I would propose we provide that regardless. So, there's about, typical health clinics provide about sixty medications or so. They take a look at your list of medications and they typically pick the top sixty. They're non-narcotics, so you're not going to be able to go buy OxyContin or Percocet, right? They're typical things like antibiotics, high blood pressure medication, high cholesterol medication. Diabetes medication comes from there. So one of the big things about having medication free is you have a greater chance of adherence by an employer, an individual, right? So sometimes medical cost becomes a concern for an employee, so I'll take half of my blood pressure medication so I can make it last sixty days instead of thirty. So offering it free provides adherence to that. And truthfully, like high blood pressure medication, high cholesterol medication, generics is dirt cheap. I'd rather give it to you for free and know that you're going to take it than risk you not taking it, and we have a heart attack or a stroke. Because that one heart attack or stroke is going to be able to give many, many people lifetimes worth of medication for a significantly cheaper cost.
I have to say, I'm very uncomfortable with, are we approving the health, health insurance clinic tonight? I mean, like, the whole thing, the whole operation?
Well, we can't approve the whole operation because we don't have a vendor yet. We're asking you to
Why would we do the building if we don't have the rest of the plan? And, since we're not starting this till March of twenty-five, why don't you come back with us and show us how this is going to save us money before we invest in the facility? Why do we have to upfront the facility? We have nothing on paper as to how this is going to work.
Because none of the five construction firms will hold that bid until March of two thousand twenty-five if we decide to wait until March of two thousand twenty-five.
You're not going to hold the bid? I mean, they're not starting till March of twenty-five, right?
They're not going to hold that bid without us signing on the line to build that till March of twenty-five.
Well, I don't believe we should be, I mean, we're not, it's like we're deciding the whole clinic.
Linda, you're asking, you're asking a lot of people, Linda, you're asking a lot of people to wait until you finish, yet you continue to interrupt people.
I don't think that's happening, but go on, who else wants to?
Well, just to what you were saying before, Linda, about the cost, if we were to, you know, the bid now is X amount. If you wait until March of next year, we know, we've learned, right? It's going to be even more expensive to wait until March of next year. Am I right?
I, that's just not, that's not, that argument, when you say it to me, it doesn't even do anything for me, because that's true. That's just, I mean, that's a, that's a rookie comment, sorry. Everybody can say that. It's true on everything. It's not a reason.
Two comments.
Maxu, please.
One is that I think the Health Clinic will be a very good initiative from the district perspective because it not only down the road decreases healthcare cost, because you have self-funded right now, it also becomes a better place, better, better place to work, you know, like a
Feature.
Feature, which will be very important, attracting new talents and retaining talents, because I think so that additional is not only a lot of organizations have actually done this way where they have invested and, and I think, as I mentioned in my previous comments regarding that, is that actually health organizations are incentivizing employees to X, Y, and Z, and will give you two hundred, five hundred dollars. I know that we can't right now afford that kind of money to give a thousand dollars, which I get, for example, from my employer, you know, just to be I check, doing some X, Y, and Z, some checkboxes, you know, we can't afford, we're not offering right now, but I think, you know, if we can offer this basic, you know, very attractive feature, we will be attractive. Second point, which I wanted to mention is that for this other alternates which we have, especially the small amounts, can we approach the South Chamber of Commerce? If any businessmen, for example, they want to have their, like, logo, hey, you know, like, I'm just throwing out the word, you know, X, Y, and Z, Marsh, or someone like that, you know, because they are so-called healthcare associated, you know? If Marsh wants to sponsor, you know, playground, hey, your name will be there, your banner will be there, something like that, your grave on the brick and all this stuff. So if you can find ways and means, maybe I'm too naive, right, I'm just kind of throwing out some ideas.
So I, the only one I'm going to address, and I appreciate you saying Maxu, is, and I've, in dealing with two clinics before, I live by the same model. If it breaks even and doesn't save us a single cent, but doesn't cost us a single cent in healthcare, we've made the place a better place to work for a good number of people. So typical person can go to the clinic and be back in their classroom in under an hour. Especially if you work at Forest Park, you're going to be able to walk over, right, very quickly. So, we live in a small enough district where that will be true for every building, regardless of which one you work in. So again, if it doesn't cost us anything, doesn't save us anything, we're still a better place to work simply by having that.
Please, Linda.
I know you've been involved in these in the past, but you know, things have changed since you've implemented those. One thing particularly is that you can just see a doctor on your computer. You can just call up and you can have your visit right from the, your office. So doesn't that change the dynamics of being, having to go to a physical place? I mean, we don't, things are different than when you implemented before. Those options are available, and they're encouraged.
Yep, we had those options in both places too. We also had a co-pay associated with them, just like we have here for our virtual visits.
Yeah, you have co-pays associated with those. And the one benefit you didn't mention about this clinic is, you talked earlier about behavior modification and changing behaviors in terms of using preferred radiology, reference pools, and subspecialty reference pools. If employees are using our clinic, you, you do not have to rely on them to know which is the preferred place to get your x-rays done. The people providing the care here will automatically send our employees. So that's another cost benefit there.
And also, you know, having in-person, remote telehealth is becoming a thing, but that's mostly for behavioral health. But for any of the PCP and all this stuff, it is always worth a million dollars for a physician or a provider to lay at the hand and just say, listen to the heart. Multiple studies have shown that physician, just a provider, just putting even a stethoscope on the patient's chest makes them feel much better. So that physical component is very, very important, and I can tell you as a practicing physician, it is very, very important having a provider touching you, you know, examining you, making, reassuring you that you are okay.
Yep. Well, it's my recollection that when we talked about this last, that the clinic was an overwhelming, an overwhelming plus with seven out of seven of us. That's my recollection. It might be wrong, but it's my recollection from March of twenty-three. Mary, please.
Just two quick things. Even before I came on the board, I heard very repeated compelling articulate speeches from Mr. Anderson about the benefits and the need for this CIRC building. I mean overwhelmingly compelling. And then my other question is more towards this little grid. When you said the alternates, we could do ourselves, so presumably that means they would be cheaper. What is doing it ourselves, doing it on our own, what does that mean?
Yep, so for instance, that alternate one, omitting playground surfacing, is actually, we're going to take care of going out and procuring somebody to do the playground surfacing. Now, when you see that alternate one here, that's all the prep underneath. We've asked them to keep the prep underneath and actually carve out the rubber surface. And we will take care of then procuring Lee Recreation to do not only the install, or supply the playground equipment and install, but ask them to actually pour the rubber surface as well. So essentially, it's taken out, and then I look to Andy and go, okay, well, if we pull this out, what can you do it for? And he gives us an estimate of what he thinks we can do it for, and then we make the decision whether we're going to have them do that or have them not do it. So I'll give you a great example. The alternate for the omitting sidewalk, so part of the city requirements is the concrete sidewalk that's here, turns to asphalt. They want that concrete all the way to the crosswalk. So we saw a hundred twelve thousand dollars here on opening bid day, everybody left, and Mike and Andy and I looked at each other and said, we'll do the sidewalk ourselves. We were pretty much called within about an hour afterwards and saying, oh, we have the wrong number in there, we actually added something in twice. They kind of explained the whole thing, you see the dots down below. Ultimately, for twenty-seven thousand dollars, we still can't do that sidewalk on our own. Now, why can they do it for that? Well, they're already geared up with concrete trucks, they already have the tools that are already able to tear out the ground and do that, that's already on site. We'd have to scale that all up, still get the concrete on site, right? So they have, it's just part of the overall project, the stuff in here to already do that. But in some cases, we would rather do it ourselves. So the playground equipment, like, we, we want to take a really strong look at that and not pay an overcharge to have it be part of it as well. And so we said, we'll take care of doing that. The equipment for the pads to go around, same thought process. We can pick that out, we'll ask them to install it, but we can take care of picking it out, getting it on site, and then having the company that actually builds those and installs them, install that, because that's what they do.
We, we talked about
Did you have another question?
Nope. Just the Mr. Anderson and then this.
We, we talked about, forgive me, I don't, I don't remember the number, one point one million or something that was, that was put in.
Yeah, one point one five.
That was from, from the Rec Department's earnings over the last, I don't know how long.
Yep.
But they seem to have a, they seem to have earnings of a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe Mr. Anderson has more of those numbers. But do we expect those numbers to be more going forward? And will that help offset some of the, some of the added costs of the project?
Yep, so that answers, yes, actually, Brad and I met today, one of his key performance objectives for this particular year was to increase revenue, and I can't remember if it was like five percent, ten percent, something like that. Ultimately, revenue is tracking at about one percent above, although usership or registrations in the Recreation Department are tracking ten percent up. So that doesn't seem to jive. But when Brad really dug down into that, is that we're sending a lot of seats out, we're doing the registrations for places where, for businesses where we actually send the people to. So we're receiving enough revenue to pay for the registration, but we're kind of paying for a seat for that person to then go there and have that. So bringing that in-house and just paying in, and paying an instructor versus paying for their facility and all those other things that go with it would generate more revenue, potentially offsetting our levy overall, or keeping it stable for a longer period of time, is what I would say. Because it had been stable, we raised it two years ago, but trying to keep it stable, it's kind of like Because it had been stable, we raised it two years ago, but trying to keep it stable, it's kind of like healthcare. If we can really flatten it out over a long period of time, or slowly increase, we're going to be a lot better off in general.
We also have wait lists on a lot of our fitness classes. And by having a facility of our own during the day, we will be able to take wait lists, add additional classes to those. So I would expect that would be additional revenue coming in off of existing programs we have, plus the ones now we can create with the additional space.
Thank you. Lynda, you had a question?
Yes, so the clinic, could that be opened up in existing space? Since you're bringing the rec offices to this new facility, why couldn't that clinic operate in existing space? Why does it have to be new space?
Because those will be part of what we're going to talk about next, because those won't exist as they are today. But we have evaluated that, and actually renovating that space was more expensive than building a brand-new one.
Yeah, we talked about that.
That question's been asked before.
Also, issues about patient confidentiality, this having a separate entrance away from the high school, so that if people are going for their medical care, they're not being observed by their fellow staff members going in and out of the clinic. We talked about that.
Why can't you go to a clinic and why does it have to be?
Because patient privacy is a thing. I have a question.
Please.
Does this budget include the necessary funds for outfitting your, the spaces with equipment for the classes?
Yep, 100%. All, all, it's a turnkey project, ready to roll on day one.
Max Sud. You know, when Lynda was mentioning about the 2.3 million from the rec fund, and right now we are only moving 1.3, and so how many, how much?
2.15.
2.15. So how much is remaining in the rec fund? If you can utilize it.
Yeah, my guess would be about $800,000 or so would be left in that recreation.
That's what you had in the budget.
Somewhere around there.
So technically, can I, if we, in the, when it comes to the budget approval, so maybe this number which we are kind of, you know, will not be extra needed?
So, yep, we can certainly take a look at the amount of levy to make sure that we're utilizing as much of that, as much of recreation current fund balance plus the 1.15 as possible, without putting them in jeopardy for a long-term issue.
Because one of the things which kind of, you know, the reason I'm trying to address is that we have a referendum coming up, you know, and I'm not trying to attach both the things together, but kind of, you know, as, I'm just putting myself in the taxpayers', you know, when this is being, this is being, I want the community to feel that, okay, you know, this is being brought up and on top of this. So the minimum, the, if we can try to maximize each and every opportunity not to bring any additional tax levy, hopefully that will translate into our success in November. So I want to ensure that we have that vision and goal, if possible. I know that numbers sometimes do squeeze, especially with inflation and all that stuff. And, but if we can, because our, we have bigger goals to achieve here in November with that referendum. So we want to kind of, you know, not set off in a negative manner, anyway, the community that, hey, you're taxing me here, you're taxing me there, and all of a sudden, you know, we get a, a snowball effect into something negative, which is our school district.
So, great point. The 82 cents that you talked about on the 12th is inclusive of this being added into that. So that does not take it past 82 cents, because the CERC building is on top. That was already part of calculating where we're going to be, knowing we're going to have that this particular year, and then estimating where that project would go as well. So that's all inclusive of that.
Do we have to take action on this tonight, or is this merely informational?
Informational tonight, with requests for action on the 10th of July.
Well, I'm just happy that after Brad first started reporting out on the survey back from whatever year it was, 2011, that all of that work is hopefully going to come to some response to the needs of the community.
All right, any other questions? All right, item F, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $145 million. Action item. Mr. Cromie, please.
So I was not here on the 12th, but my understanding from the June 12th meeting is that moving forward with the projects that were presented that have the total of $145 million was where the board would like us to proceed. So ultimately, given that, I reached out to Quarles and Brady, who does legal work for referendums, deficiences. We've had them for our deficiences the last couple of years, and explained, we are considering resolution to go to referendum in November of 2024, what is absolutely necessary for us in order to do that. So they developed both resolutions, F and G, that you see here. F being the requirement first, so the resolution as written was provided from Quarles and Brady. David Gross from Quarles is here. If we have any specific questions on either of the resolutions, but we do have to vote on them separately. Again, ultimately, when approving both the initial resolution for the $145 million and then the resolution authorizing the referendum election are done in order to get a question on the ballot. They do not authorize us to take out $145 million bond should the referendum not pass in November. So those three pieces have to be in conjunction, right? These two resolutions and this has to be yes, in order for that to work.
Lynda, please.
Is this what it's going to read on the referendum? I mean, that's what they're going to vote on?
Should I walk up to the microphone?
It's close. The, there would be a ballot question that takes the language from the initial resolution and modifies it into question format. It's actually, the ballot itself is attached as an attachment to the referendum resolution, as I think Exhibit D. So you might be able to see that if you have a copy of that in front of you.
So in G, if you click in G and go to the board report, you will find it located under, oh, sorry. It would be the specific question for residents that's in bold, will be what the referendum question would ask.
Although that's not part of our, what we're approving here, but that's implied, or?
So the, the, under Wisconsin statutes, the process for sending a ballot question to referendum consists of kind of these two procedures. The first is the passing of this initial resolution, and the second is the referendum resolution where in, within that resolution, we cross-reference each of these exhibits, including Exhibit D, the ballot question, which would be the question that goes on the ballot and gets submitted to the county clerk for inclusion in the ballot.
Is that the second one or the first one?
That's the second one.
It's the second one.
That's bolded in item G. Shall the Franklin Public School District, et cetera?
The first we have to approve, Agenda Item F, the initial resolution.
And that's all that is?
And then we would go to G and approve the question.
This is just because of the law, right?
Yeah, that's right. It's just the way that it's structured under Wisconsin statutes, Section 6705 in the Wisconsin statutes.
And there's no purpose implied in this, why we're authorizing this borrowing? There's no purpose attached to it.
The purpose for the borrowing itself?
Right.
It's listed within the resolution. It's all, there's language in the resolution that lists out all the projects involved.
In the board, in the question that would go on the referendum, is what you'd be approving, the $145 million to do.
I'm asking about F, the initial resolution. We have to prove that also, right?
The initial resolution has a paragraph in it that includes the dollar amount of the proposed borrowing and a list of, kind of a, a long run-on sentence list of all the projects that are proposed.
And gee, you're not, I'm talking about
So the process was emailed to the board yesterday about Wisconsin referendum. So that's explaining why the two items are there. I think that's getting at what you're asking, Mr. Gross, and why they're in the order they're in for approval.
Right, and my question is, what are we approving in the initial resolution, other than an amount? That's it? There's no purpose identified with it, other than we're going to borrow this money?
There is, there is a purpose. I'm not sure if you're just seeing the title of the resolution. There's the title of it, which is called Initial Resolution Authorizing $145 Million General Obligation Bonds.
I don't see any attachments in the agenda items, though.
Darlene has those for the purposes. We did not attach them into there. But yes, it's attaching the $145 million to do the projects that are listed, which would be the projects in the question for letter G. All the things that we've talked about, and were talked about on the 12th.
So that is part of the, both of the resolutions?
This is the formal process of doing that particular set of projects.
And is there, like, how long do they have to spend the money? Is that part of it, or is there any kind of, yeah, rules on that?
Five years. The authority is good for five years.
It is five years.
To issue, to issue bonds, you have five years to issue bonds after the referendum is approved.
Okay. And can you just kind of maybe give me the idea behind why we're approving this before the voters have even spoken? Why are we, as a board, acting on something that we're asking our voters to approve?
So I would view it as the board formally submitting the question to be added to the ballot for electors to approve or reject.
That's G, item G on here, on the agenda.
It's kind of, it's both of them in conjunction. And I don't disagree with you that it's a little bit odd, but it's the way that the statutes have, have it set up.
I move to approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $145 million.
Second.
All right, the motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Yank. Any further discussion? All right, do we need to have a voice vote since it involves money?
I think we should.
Yep, we should roll close.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wkowsk, Mrs. Wkowsky?
No, nay.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries, six to one.
Six to one, sorry.
I now move to approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $145 million. Item G on the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan. Any discussion?
Just a question?
Lynda, please.
Yeah, I have a question here, consisting, I'm reading this now, what's all included, and we do have American with Disabilities Act compliance updates. What? I didn't, I don't remember hearing a lot about what, where we're deficient there, or what that's about.
Oh, I can, we heard a lot about that in terms of improvement needs at all of the elementary schools, entrance and egress issues, bathroom accessibility issues, and in terms of the science lab specifically at the high school not being accessible to people who are wheeled, in wheelchairs or other assistive devices. So if we were to reference the binder full of materials that we've been given over the past nine months, it was brought up on numerous occasions.
Although, are we in non-compliance? Are we not compliant?
Remember, we talked about the fact that these don't get audited until you make a significant improvement in the facility. So we are in compliance because we haven't been doing work on them. But as soon as they have to go and be approved by a licensing body, then we would be seen to be not in compliance. Is that correct, Nick?
Correct.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, can we have a voice vote, please?
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Dr. Beer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Wkowsky?
Nay.
Motion carries, six to one.
Thank you. All right, annual academic standards adoptions. Mrs. Bennet, please.
All right, Mr. Bussington's now here with us this evening. Statutorily, the first meeting of the new school year, we always adopt the standards. So this is a first read, so that we can adopt. At the July 10th meeting, we're looking to adopt the Wisconsin, Wisconsin State standards, as we have in the past.
All right, does anybody have any questions, comments?
Were there any changes?
No, there are no changes.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you. Resolution authorizing a warranty deed for a
Adopt them, excuse me, do you have to adopt them?
Well, adopt from the July 10th meeting. So first of the new year, after July 1st, so always do the first read now.
Okay.
Resolution authorizing a warranty deed for a 45-foot R.O.
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way for tax key, 838-997-8001. Mr. Cromie, please.
Yep, so you'll see a map in the board report. As part of doing the, all of the work for the CERC building, it was discovered that our lot line actually runs down the middle of Forest Hill Avenue. In order to move that to the proper lot line, or what really should be a proper city lot line, we have to approve, as it's written there, the resolution authorizing a warranty deed for a 45-foot right-of-way, which is essentially moving that down to the blue line that you would see there, for the tax key, which is just a tax key for this particular property. This is really a formality to get us out of the middle of the road and into the proper lot line.
I move that we approve the transfer of the property right-of-way as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Lynda, please.
I'm just wondering why Annalise is not signing it, and why you're signing it?
Because we needed to put a name on the deed.
Why Andy signing it versus me signing it? I mean, Andy's been doing the work with the city. That's pretty common in that office and the building. We worked in conjunction together. Is there a concern?
I just thought it would be you, that's all.
We work together on it, so none of it's done in isolation, if that's a concern.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Preliminary budget, 2425. Mr. Cromie, please.
So the preliminary budget was presented at our May 20th meeting, I believe. As I stated there, no adjustments will be made to the preliminary budget. Essentially, what we're asking when approving a preliminary budget is, can we pay people as of July 1st? And can we get POs out the door so we can have school up and running? If I were to tell you the number of changes that have happened since May 20th, that would change today's numbers. There'd be lots of them in terms of just an individual employee, so different health insurance during open enrollment, or an employee moving to a different position from principal to assistant in the curriculum department, right? So those things happen, and they're going to happen, and they're going to continue to happen throughout the summer. So presenting the preliminary budget as it was, we're asking you to act to approve it, so we can do those two things. Again, pay people and get our POs cut for the beginning of the school year. Numbers will certainly change when we bring it back for the annual meeting in August, and numbers will again be adjusted when we take a look at the actual tax levy and budget in October, which will include the CERC building we talked about today. One keynote I'll add for the October budget, so that you're not entirely caught off guard in October. Based on passing resolutions F and G, we'll be bringing two tax levies and essentially two Fund 39 borrowings to the board, or two levy portions to the board. One would be if voters approve the referendum on November 5th, we would turn in a tax levy to the city on November 6th, estimating our first payment in October of '25. One would be if the taxpayers say no, this is what the tax levy we would set at would be. And that's really based on our financial advisor and how we would structure our bond payments, is to try to get that started right away as we're starting those construction pieces and all that planning.
Is that date new from our retreat last week? Because I feel like when Max Sud asked that question about when the referendum-approved levy would begin to take effect, it was still a bit TBD, or?
Yep, so we, so we can fit the 82 cents in pretty much with no problem in '25, '24, '25. So we would really look to make our first payment in October of '25. But in order to make a payment in calendar year '25, so that the payment of debt works on a calendar year versus our fiscal year, we have to levy that in the 2024, 2025 budget to make that payment of October of 2025.
Okay.
So it all fits. The ultimate thing is it starts the 20-year process of repaying that earlier, right? So the longer we push that off, the longer we're holding on to that debt and paying more interest on it.
Lynda, please.
So the budget before us, right now, though, increases the tax levy 5%. Is that correct?
But you're not approving a tax levy today.
But if we were to, it would be five percent?
I'll, I'll just agree with you because I haven't totally looked at the tax levy since I put it together, to be honest with you.
Could you look at it, please?
Sure.
So we're just approving to pay bills going over July one. We're not approving the final budget right now.
I'm just asking if
I appreciate the question. I think it'll be really good to bring back at that time.
The document that we have in front of us.
That's five percent.
Five percent, and this is follows a five percent that we increased last year. So two years of five percent increases following years of less than one percent. Where, what's, what are you expecting next year? Where's this trend going?
Well, if we approve this, we would try to keep it within seven dollars and ninety-four cents plus eighty-two cents for the referendum. That's what we would try to keep that.
My question is tax that we percent change, not rate.
Truthfully, I haven't done an estimate of what that will do. I know we'll be able to keep it within the mill rate. I haven't taken a look at the overall levy for future years.
I have a question. One thing that'll be interesting when we have that conversation in October is knowing how much over property, overall property valuation the district has gone up over the past year as well, because, you know, as we've discussed, it's gone off significantly over the past few years, which does have an impact on levy.
So I'm asking you a question, Angie. So what if it was ten percent increase in valuation? What would you expect the rate to do?
I am interested in approving a budget that meets the needs as identified by our coherence plan. So, and I think that I'm prepared to say it's okay to cut checks and pay the teachers based on the preliminary budget we've been given today.
Which, as it stands, is increasing tax every five percent. If nothing changes.
Yep.
Five percent.
Yep.
Following a five percent.
Thank you for making that point.
Thank you, because I, I want understanding, understanding, so, and and that five percent is really not generated by general education. It's generated by
And this, in this case, it's adding some of it as CIRC building, right? Because we're increasing levy to pay for the CIRC building. Voucher payments increased by two hundred thirty thousand dollars. General education increased by nine hundred thousand dollars from last year. So there are some changes outside of the CIRC building that are causing that to go up.
And the CIRC building levy is only for two years, right?
We've already done one, the one point eight-two-five, so this will just be for the fall of twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. And at this point, levy is going up four point eight million for the CIRC building in this, this scenario?
Three point, three, what was it, three point three, something, change?
So that'll be going down then?
So that's certain, the community education rec building or recreation budget of seven point three million dollars in tax levy would move to around four hundred, or four million dollars, about three point three for the CIRC building, six hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred fifteen for the general operations.
So we know that right now, the budget, oh, sorry, this is changing, instead of a seven point three, it's going to be what?
About four million dollars.
Four million dollars.
Yep, I discussed that during the CIRC agenda item.
I guess I'm wondering why you didn't make that change.
Because it's the second read and we're just trying to get through to pay bills in July. It's not the final budget. So instead of, because we had the discussion in May and then coming together today and re-discussing why things changed in it, it's the understanding that these are the things that are flexing it. We've had all the transparent conversations at the table about that. The final budget's coming together in fall, which is what the board ultimately approves. You're not approving an ultimate final budget right now. So the reason we didn't change it, and Andy and I have had this discussion in unison, is that we've already had the initial conversations at the table of the first read. To change it to second read because of things that we know are going to continue to move in the next couple of months as the district runs, wouldn't make sense. But you're identifying that, yes, there's things that are going to adjust as we move forward. And that's why that final budget approval will be really important.
Thank you.
I move to approve the preliminary number, second, number two budget for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Dr. Beer. I think we need a voice vote, please.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Yank?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Wukowski?
I vote no.
Motion carries, six to one.
Thank you. Board liaison reports or school and community engagement reports, either or.
I can report as liaison to the Education Foundation that we had quite a successful golf outing on Friday, this past Friday. We had the most perfect weather that we've ever had. A lot of fun, a lot of money raised, a lot of really great community connections too with the different business partners that were there golfing and that kind of thing, so hugely successful, and thanks to all of you who were part of the day.
I attended my first SWSA meeting. It was sort of a restructuring meeting as the new executive director took over, and she was attempting to clarify the mission and vision statement of the group. So it was very much a working meeting, and I'll be reporting on it what the results of that are. But she's definitely looking for direction on how SWSA can be specifically of use to its member schools, so if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Was it, did you go in person?
I did not.
Okay.
But Mr. Cromie and Mrs. Bennet did. I think I will go
It was probably our most productive meeting at SWSA we've had in the last six months, I would guess, at least.
Oh, boy. That's all I have to say to that.
They were in transition.
Because I did not find it particularly. It was interesting. It was learning. And I want to thank you all for the work you did on graduation. It was a lovely event, not least of which because five of our children walked across the stage.
I've heard people just come up and say, that was so great, unsolicited, unasked, just saying it was so great.
Yep.
And the eighth grade promotion, and Dr. Beer had a fabulous
Well, thanks, Mary. I appreciate it.
It was wonderful.
I know I embarrassed my child, so mission accomplished.
You got laughs, that's all that counts.
All right, anybody else, please, Linda?
I was able to attend the breakfast, and it was a wonderful event. The food was delicious. And lots of, it's, there's a lot of businesses in, in the area, definitely. So it was an interesting interaction. And senior awards night.
Oh, boy, that was a while.
I know.
It's been a while since then. Um, looking ahead, community engagement wise, we got the email about the parade. Do we want to just, are we all going to be able to be at the parade? And do we have candy figured out? And do we have a car?
All right, are you looking at me for?
Yeah.
I hate to say it, but I'm going to be in Greece.
Ooh.
It's Noah going to be in Greece.
That's going to be a really long throw. I don't know how you're going to get there.
She's got quite the arm.
Got a pretty good arm.
Darlene and I had talked about it, and I suggested Mr. Sprague's cute little new Bronco that he drives around and that that could be the car.
You do have a disco ball.
All right, Mr. Sprague.
Of course I do.
So I volunteered you, Mr. Sprague, but the candy is all taken care of and so are the things for the national night out as well.
Oh, thank you. But it sounds like the route is in, is in doubt.
The route? Uh, we emailed with the parade organizer this week, and she said that she feels as if it will take off as normal, so the same lineup.
Good.
But she will let us know if it changes. If it changes, it'll be right out here, so, the lineup.
Uh, is anybody else going to be in Greece or somewhere else? We can talk about who's going to walk that way.
I'll be in Franklin. You'll have at least two, three people.
Oh, great. Awesome?
I may go into Greendale, but I can come back.
All right, anybody else? All right, annual academic, future agenda items, annual academic standards adoptions, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five policy review schedule, staff handbook, new coherence plan, CIRC building bids, and Franklin Forward Engagement Plan information item. A school board meeting debriefing. Does anybody have any comments?
I think I just have a comment about, I think, our successful graduation. I know there's always, you know, some concerns and talk about, but this year again proved to be how important it is to have graduation at a facility which can cover, especially when it's supposed to rain or not rain and all that stuff. So it was an important, again, point, proving that having graduation at a facility which, in which you are covered by the rain or shine, it was very, very important. I think each and every community members I spoke to were very appreciative of that, that they didn't have to be soaked in rain because of the, you know, of the covering as such. So again, it proves the point of how important it is to us to serve the community in the best interest, and it was a lovely event.
And if only every school could go there.
Oh, that's a good point, yep.
All right, anybody else? All right, I, I have something to say. I'd just like to thank Anna Lee, Andy, Jess, Laura, Leo, Brad, Chad are all in the room, and all the administration and all the teachers for a really great school year, and for helping move our children forward. I appreciate it. My, I know the board appreciates it, but thank you, everyone, for your hard work this year. Anyone else? All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven forty-one. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, that was Debbie and Linda.
Yeah.